Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, February 18th at approximately 7:00 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I am joined by my fellow board member, Christopher Weider. We're also joined by our town administrator, Blythe Robinson, and our executive assistant, Judith Lizardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded, consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel, as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And that is why you do not copy and paste your intro script from the last meeting right there. Terrible idea.
Note to self.
Would you mind taking us through the agenda tonight, Blythe?
Sure. Starting off, we have a public hearing on water rates for FY '21, starting in July, followed by public comment. There are four action items. First is to consider authorizing the select board chair to execute the town's green community designation grant application, to consider approval of the board's revised public comment policy, to consider the approval of the second annual Norfolk CPAC 5K road race, to be held on Sunday, May 31st, and to please consider approval of the Norfolk Range's request for funds to supply a dumpster for their 11th Annual Clean and Green Townwide Cleanup Day on Saturday, March, excuse me, April 18th. There are no discussion items. There are five warrants to sign and no minutes.
Thank you very much. So our first item tonight is the public hearing for the FY '21 water rates. Barry, right ahead.
Yes, thank you for having me tonight. So I pulled a little presentation for you guys. I'll briefly take you through our discussion agenda for tonight. We're going to look at the water rates, give basic, give you an overview of as to where we are today, discuss the proposed '21 rates. I want to look at the budget, give you a little bit of the revenue and status and the history of where we're at, and the importance of the retained earnings and capital projects. And then lastly, give you a little update as to where we are with the development of our new well source and a couple other products we have going on for the water system. So we were before you about this time last year, we had discussed the fact last year that the rates hadn't been raised in five or six years until FY '20. The goal is to raise the minimum charge each year to $150 annually. We're presenting separate rates for '20, '21, and '22. The goal of these rates to design to generate approximately $1 million each year in revenue, but this is something we've got to continually revisit every year and see what our goals are. The rate increase is needed to cover new debt, such as Holbrook Street Well. The grade increase is needed to fund capital projects and strengthen the enterprise fund. We like to set aside some money for that each year. For FY '20, it was a step rate increase. It was a large percentage increase, from 11% to 24%. We, first time implementing the capital fee, was going to the Holbrook Street Well. That was at $1.45 per 1,000 gallons. And recently, we implemented our quarterly billing. So we went from semi-annual billing to quarterly billing. For '21, we're looking at raising the rates by 5%. The capital fee will decrease from $1.45 to $1.41. And the goal with this increase is to basically do small incremental increases, instead of a large increase, as we did last time around. So the chart shows you some of the proposed changes. Typical residential, so for the service charge, the semi-annual service charge will go from $60 to $70. The three quarters meter will also be the same. Then we actually raised the rates a little higher for more of the industrial, commercial buildings. Your consumption rate is going to go up as well. For 1,000 to 15,000 gallons, it's going to go from $6 to $6.30. 15,000 to 35,000 gallons is going to go to 8.05. 35,000 gallons to 50,000 is going to be 11.26. Like I said before, capital fee is going to go down to $1.41. And our fire protection and semi-annual charges haven't changed at all. This chart explains a little bit easier way to understand, looking at the residential usage. On the side over here, we put together some average numbers to get, to give you an idea of what people are usually paying. So, single-family home, the low end is $759. The high end is $1,289.
Except for a year?
For the year, yes. Single-family home with irrigation, the low end is around $2,100. The high end is 56. We have some numbers in here for retired communities, so the low end for them is 410. The high end would be 617. And then we have a partial residence. Now, those residents, they're only in town for part of the year. Their low end is 347. Their high end is 406. So that's what we're currently looking at for numbers for our users.
Barry, what's retired community? Is that, what is, when you say retired community?
Rivers Edge, Pinot, things like that. Yeah, so with our water and billing data, we're actually able to go through and kind of give you guys some averages and what people are actually expending on water in town.
Because we recognize that some people, if they go to Florida for the winter, they're not going to have water usage in the colder months. So trying to take some averages and give people a general idea of what their bill might change by with this rate change.
I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of our water revenues, from where we are, from where we were to where we are recording right now. So you can see we go from '16 to FY '20 to date, what the approximate appropriation was each year, what we actually expended for the water enterprise budget, and the revenue that we took in. So this isn't just billing customers. This is all the revenue that the DPW would have taken in for water.
What else does that include, Barry? Such as new connection fees?
New connections, service fees, any inspections that we do, backflow prevention. There's a bunch of fees that go into that.
And does this include the meeting house wastewater treatment plan as well?
No, this is just water.
This doesn't include that at all?
Just water.
Sewer's a separate enterprise.
Okay, so we don't, but don't we allocate, okay, we'll get to that.
Yeah, that's a whole other animal for another time.
Yep.
This is just our water. This also down here kind of shows you what our commitment was for this year. So for quarter one and quarter two, we were still semi-annual, so we billed out about $890,000. Quarter three, this is when we switched over to the quarterly billing. So our projected one and two, our commitment for one, two, and three is about 1.2 million. We're kind of projecting, what we're estimating for our fourth quarter commitment, and then our total commitment for FY '20 could be right around 1.6 million. What we have noticed is, you know, basically, we're switching over from a semi-annual billing system, which takes in, you think about it, January and a bit of July, so you have a period of low water usage and a period of high water usage. And then your second semi-annual bill would be the same, because we pick up a little bit of the summer and get into the fall, so you have a basic seasonality there to it. Quarterly billing, we're going to be able to see a little bit of highs and lows more clearly, because it's going to be based on the seasonality of our billing. So our current revenue to date is $812,000, and this is just based on water billing. None of the other revenues we take in. Why is it important that we have retained earnings? So the whole goal of this was, you know, the five or six years, we were running in a deficit. We weren't banking that money, our rainy day fund, our reserves. By having retained earnings, it gives us working capital, expenses, when our expenses exceed available cash, we have money there to use. When we have revenue shortfalls, when water consumption is less than projected, last year, we had a very wet and rainy year. Water usage wasn't as high as the year before, because it was a dry year. Emergency expenditures, if we had a catastrophic system failure, one of the tanks went down, one of the pumps went down. We need the money there, so we could repair it. The other thing we're looking at is this consistently new regulatory requirements coming out, such as PFAS, and they're also looking at more regulations for iron and manganese. So these are things we're going to have to deal with coming down the road.
It's important, it's considered a good business practice, to keep approximately six months of expenses in reserve. And for us, we did have a higher amount, but we used a portion of it this last fall to set aside in a warrant article for the water main that goes to Holbrook Street Well. And, you know, we'll also, if you recall the capital plan, we've also been planning for starting to consistently replace old transite pipe. So while, you know, if we have a good year, we might be able to use less money and bill for the amount of water that will cover our budget, but doesn't put us in a position to be prepared for those expenses coming down the road, or in a year where we don't sell as much water and we dip into it. Because at the end of the day, if we didn't have enough money in water, the way the state requires us to balance our water budget is to go to all taxpayers and tax them for the difference. So part of running an enterprise fund, and I actually printed off some advice about enterprise funds to give you, if you want to take it away with you tonight, that tells you, you know, how you have to do that and why you should perhaps keep more than maybe people would think they want to keep, because, as Barry said, catastrophic failure of a main pipe or a tank could go through that money very quickly, so.
Very quickly. The other importance, we need to retain some money is for our capital projects. You know, we need to continually be looking at system upgrades. New source options. Yes, we have a new source going in, but we need to keep looking at potential options for the future, new sites or new connections. System expansion, that's something we should always be looking at. Expansion of Lawrence Street, expansion of the Main Street, you know, bringing water to areas of the town that do not currently have water. Looping projects is a big priority of the DPW. We want to be able to loop our system redundancy, redundancy in water quality, so we want to look at these areas. The transite pipe replacement program, and we need to do the inventory assessment and start planning of how we're going to address this in the future. Now, some of the good things that are going on. So in regards to Holbrook Street Well, the Final Water Management Act permit was issued October 24, 2019. About two weeks ago, we started to install and develop the well field. So our Holbrook Street site will have six satellite wells. They're all individual wells that'll come into the billing altogether. The reason we have that is we're going to have higher yield wells compared to some of the lower yield wells at the site. We're going to be able to average them out, to get what we need out of that. And actually, that wrapped up on Saturday. The well rig and everything is in the process of moving out today or tomorrow. After that, we're going to get into the well field and pump station final design and permitting. Hopefully, and I just got an email the other day from our consultant, that we're on track to have our bidding going out in April 2020, with construction likely starting in July 2020 and ending in January, February '21, hopefully. So the Holbrook Street Well Field was approved as a water supply at a maximum pump rate of 400,000 gallons per day. Addition of a groundwater supply in this flow range will provide the town with a redundant supply that is crucial to our water system. And we only have two now. This is that redundant well field that'll help us a lot. Some of the other projects we've had going on, we're doing chemical conversion upgrades at the Gold Street Well and Spruce Road Well. We're modifying our existing sodium hydroxide system to a potassium hydroxide system. This will increase corrosion control and actually allow us to save some utility money. We actually have to keep the pump stations heated, even during the summertime, because the K08, excuse me, sodium hydroxide congeals at a lower level. So now we'll be able to close down on some of our utility. We're doing a couple modifications to the iWash station and then installation of a couple different tanks and alarms. So that's going on in conjunction with the Gold Street and Spruce Road Well. The other project we have going on along with this is an update to our SCADA system. So this allows us to manage and operate and monitor our system, process alarms from anywhere, so Al and I can get notifications on our phones when we have things going on. It includes upgrades to computer software encoding, upgrades to our user interface, and then the upgrades to incorporate the changes that we're doing for the chemical conversion project at Gold Street and Spruce Road Well. So they were all needed projects that we have going on, and they're all going really, really well, and should be coming to completion soon. That's all I have for that.
So Barry, I remember last year, we spent a lot of time with a consultant and getting some recommendations on how to get ourselves back to a better place in terms of the way that we were funding this account. The increase that we saw last year was pretty substantial.
Substantial, yeah.
And that was to get us back on track. Now, if I remember correctly, that plan was a three-year or a five-year plan?
Three, so '20, '21, and '22.
And this is still in line with what we had laid out for?
We're right in line with what we had discussed last year. So, yeah, instead of looking at that 24% increase, we've got to do that incremental 5%, make it a little bit easier for everybody, and then look at the rate increase again for next year.
And the reason that we did that was because the rates had stayed consistent for five years before that point?
It's about five or six years, yeah.
So we actually included the consultant's report in your package tonight, so you could look through that, especially for members who weren't on the board last year. And I would, and as I read through it, I actually questioned Barry and said, gee, the assumptions he made last year include the addition of a superintendent position, and we are not planning one at this point. But as time goes on and things change, we have noticed things that we have to be prepared for. For instance, the PFAS?
PFAS.
Yes, I've got to learn how to say that. Was not a regulation that we were expecting to have to meet last year, and then we've had to add money into the budget to plan for that. We hadn't put together a long-term, you know, a five-year capital plan last year, and we hadn't identified starting to spend money consistently every year on transite pipe replacement. So I would just, I just want to point out that I think the rate increase, you know, no one ever wants to promote a rate increase in any year if we didn't have to. But if you did the math on what Barry's presented, you'll probably have noticed that even though we had that 11% to 24% increase, we can't say with a surety right now that we're going to bring in that amount of money this year, whether people have either needed, chosen to use less water, or it was a wetter year and maybe they didn't water lawns. We're not necessarily going to bring in that much more this year, and so we have to be prepared for some of those ups and downs, so that as these new regulations come into play, or we have to, we have to address something, like any business, we have the ability to deal with it when it comes up, because in our, the way we, you know, our form of government and the way we can get approval for things is just a little more challenging than, you know, a simple transfer.
Yeah, I think this goes back to, you know, we're finally getting into some, you know, past directors and past people, they had like a plan, but it was a loose plan. We're getting to the point where we need to start mapping out solid plans for looping our system, fixing our system, system expansion, and, you know, by raising the rates and having this money available to us, it's going to allow us to do that.
My last question was on the proposed billing example slide. You had identified a single family with irrigation as one of your examples.
Yep.
That is something that we do not encourage, if I'm not mistaken.
Do not encourage. Well, Al and I have actually done some legwork on looking at basically our, I want to say, our frequent flyers, the people that are, we literally see during summer, the people that are spiking very high on their irrigation use. It's been our goal for the last couple of years to kind of craft a letter, send something out to residents, to kind of reminding them that, you know, what we're trying to do is conserve the water, and everybody wants a green lawn, but sometimes that's not the priority. So that is on our radar, it's something we like to pull together.
You know, it can't be said enough that Holbrook is going to provide us with redundancy, not necessarily more water. We're going to have to renew our Water Management Act permit soon, and with the development we've going on, we've already talked to DEP about the fact that we're going to need the ability to pump more water, and it's likely going to need to come from another source at some point someday. So being able to, first of all, making sure people are conserving and we're living within our current permit, and having the dollars in place to be able to plan for that expansion at some point, it's going to come quicker than we think. It's responsible to continue to raise the rates a small amount, you know, and so that we're prepared.
I just want to make sure we call out that that was not a?
Very good point. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Chris, did you have any other questions?
And on that, how do you control it, though? You're going to craft a letter, but how do you stop that usage?
Well, I think it's digging into the regulations, looking at, there is a bylaw, there is some regulations in place. You know, I worked in another community where my job was to go to people's houses and turn it off. They don't like that, but that's what I was given the task to do. And all I guess, we just have to sit back and really look at how hard we want to enforce this. And I think it needs to come from the selectmen working with the DPW together on it.
And we will see, we'll certainly keep you informed if we're having difficulty meeting, or we needed to open an interconnection to have enough water, because that's happening, then I would agree with Barry, we're sending people out to people's homes. It's very easy to see who's watering and who's not, and telling them they need to stop, or take it further if we have to. We don't want to get to that point, of course, but...
No, we don't want to. And Al and I have, that's one thing that's been on our radar since I started here, that was one of the things we were looking at, is our usages. Like I said, we have our frequent flyers, we know who they are, and, you know, we want to basically reach out to them and kind of remind them of the point of, to conserve water, not use the irrigation system.
And I don't know, is the chart on page 12 that we got last year, how does that relate to your chart number three? I was trying to relate the two of them, maybe the chart on page 12 from last year's report.
I don't, I think it should be the, it's pretty much the same, I just...
They're showing revenue requirements of $1,750, and I was just trying to relate them to what you have in your budget and revenue status.
That was in the?
Yeah, I didn't do it, tried to basically lump it all together for this one. Yeah, this was, so when Doug kind of put this together, it kind of goes to what Blythe was saying, you know, he took some liberties with positions that we had at the time that we don't have anymore, or we haven't filled. You know, there was some other superintendent positions that were actually getting funded out of the water. So when Doug, you know, put this together, he didn't, he didn't have the foresight to realize everything that we were changing at the DPW.
So like I said, we're going to have to meet PFAS requirements and spend money on testing for that. We didn't have the capital budget that said we need to start replacing transite pipe and planning for that. Those are things he didn't know when he did this study a year ago, so that's what I'm saying, it's a little, it's a living document and...
His recommendation was, you know, that we maintain about 1.8 million. I think Blythe and I agree that it's something we should probably visit every year, because we're just not going to know. I mean, we're continually changing, there's a lot of things in flux, and until we actually get everything ironed out, I think we're going to have to look at it on a yearly basis.
And where are we with leaks? I know, I think you had a report last time.
Yeah, we're actually way down. Al and I were talking about that this morning. We're down to about 2% or 3%, which is really, really good. We, the meetings that we had, that was one of the, one of the things that helped us out to get the wells, was that our unaccountable water was so low, compared to a lot of communities around us.
DEP actually mentioned that at the public hearing, that was last Thursday night.
Excellent, excellent.
When talking to the folks over by Kingsbury Pond.
Great.
So, I mean, I know in the past, we had some issues, but we've stepped it up and really taken care of it.
No further questions?
From my end, Blythe, anything else?
Nope, it's a public hearing, so I don't know if you want to ask if any residents want to speak.
Are there any residents who'd like to speak? Mr. Rosenberg, if you could just use the mic, thank you, sir.
Yes, I don't have any comments on the water rates. I have comments on two other water things. One is that I think the interest rate of 14.5% for people who are late paying their water bills is unreasonable, considering what banks are charging for interest, what banks are paying on savings account interest. That doesn't, has not so far affected me, but I think it's usurious, and I think the town ought to be more considerate of people who might be having difficulty, financial difficulty and difficulty paying the bills. The other comment I want to make is that I find the switch from semi-annual to quarterly billing annoying. It doubles transactional charges, and I would, I don't, I see it as an inconvenience for water takers and not of any particular benefit to the town. Those are my comments.
So to the interest rate, I think we touched on this last year and identified that the interest rate was meant to deter folks from paying late, and in the event that somebody had a problem paying, I think that we were able to make accommodations to assist them with that, that would avoid these late fees. Barry, you don't happen to have any analytics on how many times we've actually assessed this 14.5%?
Yeah, that's something, we'd have to look into that one.
We'll check with the treasurer's office.
So, I mean, there's a distinct possibility that we just have never, it's just there to deter, as opposed to break people who are having trouble through the coals.
So that's admirable, thank you for that policy. I wonder whether people who are in financial distress would be aware of that, though.
Well, we just mentioned it during a public meeting, so I hope that will assist in getting the word out.
And I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure our office staff helps, talks to people, and we don't want to see anybody paying high rates either, and we understand that, and I'm pretty sure the girls in the office address that with our customers.
And if those metrics come out relatively low, then one could argue that the 14.5% interest is working quite well.
One could. And I would be delighted if I had reason to believe that 10,000 Norfolk residents were watching this video of the public hearing and all were aware of it. Unfortunately, I think the number of people watching is likely to be less than 10,000.
We're going to send you out house to house to let each resident know.
How much will you pay me for doing that?
We're going to do it as a public service.
Senior work-off program. Senior work-off program.
I know that we include with the water bills and note about what the flat rate fee is going to. Perhaps there's something that we could add to that for a couple of the next quarters that identifies if you're having an issue with your bill, to reach out.
I don't know, I think there might be already someone in it, we'd have to look into that, because it would affect our bill setup and our processing like that, so, I mean, we'll take a look at it. I think if we get some of the numbers into it, it might just answer itself, if there's five or six people that we deal with.
Yeah, because I know in your, in that presentation last year, they did have a line item for penalty and interest, so I'm sure that can be broken out to figure out what really is the, if the penalty's less than $100. I mean, if we don't put a lot of effort into this.
Thank you.
To your second comment, David, about the switch from semi-annual to quarterly, I believe that the mindset behind that was that it would reduce the strain on people who were getting two bills at once and being asked to pay that at one time by splitting it up into quarterly payments. What is the processing fee for our online payments for our water bills right now?
If you use, if you link it to your bank account, it's de minimis, it's like...
25 cents?
25.50 cents. It's, if you use a credit card, then it's where it's...
$2.90.
There's a minimum, I think it's probably a 3% charge or a minimum.
It also puts us more in line with other communities we're doing. Norfolk was kind of the odd duck out doing the semi-annual billing. Allows us to track and monitor things a little bit better, seasonal usage, seasonal monies and things like that, instead of the semi-annual.
And was I correct in seeing in this cycle that we are going to have the ability for auto payment to be implemented somewhere in the near future, or did I mistakenly see that somewhere incorrectly?
I'm not sure about that.
I think the auto wizard is in fact enabled for that. I wanted to clarify that when I was talking about transactional costs, I didn't mean the financial cost of the 25 cents, I meant the friction of the inconvenience of having to get another bill, having to remember to process it, in my case, moving money from one account to another to cover it, so it was not the financial cost, it was the friction of the transaction.
Understood.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments you'd like to share for water rates? All right. Well, in that case, I believe that we will be continuing our hearing until our second meeting in March, to give our fellow select board person the opportunity to weigh in as well. Do we have to make a motion for that?
Continue it to the, either March 17th or the second meeting in March, whichever you feel more comfortable with.
All right, I move to continue the public hearing on the fiscal year '21 water rates to our second meeting in March, tentatively scheduled for March 17th, but could change.
What time?
7:00 PM once again, I think it's the safest.
Second?
Second, further discussion? Earring now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Barry.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Barry.
All right, our next item this evening is our public comment period. During this period, we invite anybody who is in attendance to come up and join us at the table, to share some comments, concerns, or anything that is in relation under the purview of this board. We ask that these not be directed to an individual, and just meant to bring attention to items for follow-up with the town administrator or the select board at a later date and time. With that, we have our first esteemed guest, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to make a comment. We have in this town two beautiful, very expensive buildings. One of them is the Freeman Centennial Building, and it has a sign outside that's 20 feet long and 30... long and three feet high that's lit at night, so we know where the place is. We also have a state-of-the-art dispatch center, cost over $10 million from what I understand. It has a nine-by-30-inch sign that says "Police" on it, which is very hard to see when you're going down the highway. It's amongst some other signs. It's difficult to spot, and you're not really sure that that's indeed the dispatch center. So, what I would like to have is that remedy. I'd like to have a bigger sign, a more impressive sign that indicates what kind of building is up there. I think there are some restrictions, though, and I'm not sure if we have to own the land to put the sign up or whatever. But there are other things that can be done, little simple things, which I prefer to have a big impressive sign, but it could be lit at night, it could be made larger. There's a sign right next to it that's 60 inches by 48 inches, so I can't see where, you can't, it's very hard to see this little sign when you see this bunch of other signs surrounding it. The other thing I could recommend is if you can't, and you can't pull any legal maneuvers to get it on state land or the property, that maybe halfway up Sharon Ave, you could put a sign that states the dispatch center, because when you go up that street, it looks like it's just a back road. It doesn't look like a big, beautiful dispatch center is up there. It looks like a storage area, a heavy equipment storage area. It doesn't give you any indication that, yeah, this is really the right road. So I'd like to ask you if you can somehow remedy that situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and if you wouldn't mind if you could just sign your name on the sheet right there on your way out. Blithe, I do believe that's already in the works, if I'm not mistaken.
I can give you an update if you'd like. So, we have been looking into the police station sign issue, and you're right, there are some complicating factors there. First of all, we don't own, it's on a state road, we don't necessarily own the right-of-way or the land with the gas station that's next to it. The sign, the little blue sign that you mentioned is the biggest sign we can put on that size post that's already there, and there's no electricity that we control that gets there. What we're thinking, what we're looking into, a couple of things in the short term, can we get a solar, a small solar sign that could be there to power something that's a little better than what we have right now, that can fit in that limited location? And then, secondarily, more long-term, we do have the, a plan to repave Shire Drive in the next year or so. There may be enough right-of-way, that's a fairly wide opening at the street there, to be able to put a more, a bigger sign, and make a middle island, so to your point, that something that gives presence, that the police station and the MECC is up the street, might be able to go in the middle. It would have to be engineered to determine it could go there, and we may need approval from planning board for the sign, but we're trying to think about that as a better long-term solution. So, short-term, something a little better, given that we have real limitations to what we can put on land we don't own. And then a longer-term solution that will be more in what I think people expect from, to know where a significant public building is. So, we're working on it.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else for public comment this evening? Mr. Rosenberg?
My name is David Rosenberg, I live at 123 North Street. First, I have a comment based on the discussion I just heard, and that the comment is perhaps you could ask the state for permission to put a sign on the state land. The worst that could happen is they could say no. And Blithe looked like she was about to say something about that, I don't know. No, okay, sorry. Anyway, and the comment I wanted to make was, I had talked to the board earlier about different, about my desire to increase citizen engagement in town government, and I know that that was postponed because there was preparation for the fall town meeting, and there are always other things going on, and so there's never kind of a great time when it's totally quiet to do that. But I would like to remind the board that I think that that's important, that I feel that I got a commitment from the board to work on that, and I would certainly like to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment this evening? I'm seeing none. So on to our next item tonight, which is to please consider authorizing the select board chair to execute the town's green community designation grant application. Blithe, any background here?
Yes, so, since we've been named a green community, we will be receiving just under $145,000 from the state to start implementing items that are on our energy reduction plan. And you saw, you, the board actually had to approve that energy reduction plan before we submitted our final application late last year. So the energy committee met last week, and they started to discuss with myself and Facilities Director Matt Hafner, things that we could do. Unfortunately, the state's given us a fairly short deadline to get this in. They want the actual application in, and we put the whole packet for your reading enjoyment in your packet for tonight. It's pretty detailed, and they want it in by the end of the month. I, since we finished this document, we've learned that they will give us a little bit more time, but regardless of that, what they're looking for is the board's approval of one of its members to sign off on it. And what I can tell you is that we are pursuing two different projects. We can't spend more than the $144,600, and we've identified two that were in the plan that will be fairly straightforward projects to get done, have a good payback, and allow us to get them done in a timely fashion, so that when the first round of competitive grants applications is available for about this time next year, we will be ready to apply for those, because it's, I think the state is, awards further as much as $200,000, and our goal is to get one of those grants every year to help implement all of the objectives. The two projects that have been identified and the committee's very interested in are, one, to do a LED relamping of a portion of the H Olive Day School. We'd like to do the whole school once, that would be ideal, however, that would likely cost more than the $144,000. So, we're looking at doing a good chunk of it, but not the whole thing in the first round. And the other project that we've identified that is straightforward to do and can make up the difference of the funds is to do a insulation of the DPW garage. It suffers from lack of insulation, or insulation is just not there anymore, and can be done fairly, it's a fairly straightforward project to do, and again, was one of the items identified on our reduction plan. So, we are in the process of getting experts out to analyze both of these and vet our numbers, so that we can finish off the application, turn it in, and get that work done over the summer, if not before, and again, be ready to apply in the next round, because there's a lot of paperwork that goes with this whole process, and a year is, seems like a lot of time, and it isn't. So, that's what's, that's what's planned, and I realize I'm asking you to approve it prospectively, but I don't expect the two projects to change.
The only question from my end, and without looking through the whole application, does the $144,000 cover both projects?
Exactly, and that's why we would have liked to do all of H Olive Day, but we can't, the whole thing would cost more than both, so we're trying to identify two very worthy projects will give us a quick, be able to done fairly quickly, give us a great payback, and be able to hit the ground running to apply for the next round, which will take a lot of work by the committee to plan what those will be, so that we can get that application in on time. Like I said, we want to chase every dollar that we can from the state, and part of that is getting these first two done, that are fairly straightforward, done quickly, paperwork all in order, so that they'll accept our next application.
So that was a yes, they both followed on the 144?
They will. We will not, we don't have any more money to spend than that, so that's part of...
Just wanted to make sure. Chris, any questions from your end?
No questions? Nope, I think it's great. Got to go on.
All right, so with that, I would move that the board authorize the select board chair to certify the town's application for $144,600 from the state green community grant program.
Second.
There is second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item this evening is to please consider approval of the board's revised public comment policy. No background?
So this, as you know, we discussed two versions of the policy at one of our recent meetings. We had input from town council about some of those aspects, and the board agreed, as I recall, the board agreed at the time that those comments and edits from town council were appropriate, and this is the result of that. This is the final version of, version two with council's edits.
So just to recap, what we talked about, discussed, and reviewed during our last meeting, nothing changed since this came out. This is just the final version of what we discussed.
Mm-hmm.
You have any questions, Chris?
The only question I had was on number H, where we say we'll not hear personal complaints about town employees or others. Are the others, does that include citizens?
It does.
Okay. Do we, I guess others just means everybody else, is that why we identify that?
Correct.
Okay. And that was the only question I had.
Very good. Well, I have no questions. So with that, I will move that the board approve the revised version of the public comment policy.
Second.
There is second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our next item tonight is to please consider approval of the second annual Norfolk CPAC 5K Road Race on Sunday, May 31st, 2020, beginning at 10:00 AM with a rain date of Sunday, June 7th, 2020. Anything to add, Blithe?
Second annual, first one went well. Police and fire have signed off on it, they have no concerns. I didn't attend the race, so I can't really speak to it, but we have no reasons why we wouldn't suggest that you approve it.
I hope I can run by that. Chris, any questions?
No questions.
With that, I would move that the board approve the request to hold the second annual Norfolk CPAC 5K Road Race on Sunday, May 31st, 2020, beginning at 10:00 AM with a rain date of Sunday, June 7th, 2020.
And I assume the rain date at June 7th is also at 10 o'clock?
I would assume that, yes.
Well, Sundays are, you know, Sundays are a little different, because, well, I guess it would be, yeah. Okay, good. Second.
There is second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our next item tonight is to please consider approval of the Norfolk Grange's 11th Annual Clean and Green Townwide Cleanup on Saturday, April 18th, 2020, from 9:00 to 4:00 PM.
So I think it's a wonderful event, I wish more communities had them, and what the Grange is really asking for is the town to drop off a dumpster onsite, so that people can bring materials they collect, put it in it, put them in it, take it away to the wheel operator plant, so us to truck it up there, pay the tipping fee to dump the material. So I checked in with Public Works to get an estimate of what we're signing up for, and their estimate, based on a couple, last couple of years, was $452 in the town's costs to take the dumpster over, drive it up to Millbury, pay the tipping fee, drive back. And I just wanted you to be aware of that amount. I absolutely think it's something that we, that I would recommend approval for, since it's the payback of residents helping keep the community green is wonderful, but I thought you might want to know what dollar amount was you were approving.
And this isn't the first time, the 11th annual, this has been going on for...
Right, yep.
Chris, any questions?
Nope. Great, great initiative.
So with that, I would move that the board approve a request by the Norfolk Grange to provide a dumpster in support of their 11th Annual Clean and Green Townwide Cleanup on Saturday, April 18th, 2020.
Second.
There is second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's really easy, you can talk to one person when you're here, I'm not going to lie. All right, we have some warrants coming up next.
Select person, select board member Van Tyn just pointed out that someone else would need to read hers, since she's not here tonight. She had signed the first...
Asking for a lot of trust in her fellow board members. Are you willing to vouch for select person Van Tyn?
No, I'm going to let you do it. I will, I will do it, since you have two of your own.
Thank you.
So, I would make sure we get the word right. So I would move that the board approve the warrants for 131, 2020 in the amount of $843,797.70, on 24, 2020 in the amount of $28,340.75, and on 24, 2020 in the amount of $3,191,775.36.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I would move to approve the warrant dated 2/11/2020 in the amount of $1,600, and the warrant on 2/11/2020 in the amount of $245,941.94.
Second.
Your second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have no minutes to approve this evening, so that brings us to our last item of the night, which is to identify that we had some follow-up questions from our budget presentation.
So in the back of your packet is about a five-page document, which is a Q and A of all the questions that I had noted that the board asked on February 8th, as well as questions that were submitted by the public. So, these are in your packet, they're in the packet online, people can look them up just as they did the rest of this agenda packet. I just wanted, I didn't put them in here for necessarily for deliberation, just wanted everyone to know that we made an effort to get those answered and back out to everybody. If you have questions about them, I certainly can answer them. Hopefully it's helpful to you in budget deliberations.
Very nice. Thank you very much for putting that all together.
If people have follow-up questions, what should they do, submit them to you, Blithe?
Sure, probably the easiest is to just send me an email.
Okay.
The only one I didn't have an answer to on the date, and when I finished this, was the question about field maintenance fees for recreation. I heard from the direct director since then that the fees cover the things that we buy, any services or supplies, like buying seed or buying fertilizer, or having heads fixed for outside irrigation. What it does not cover is the labor provided by DPW. That's part of the town's budget already, we don't pay separately or raise money for that. It's covered in the general fund.
Very good. Chris, anything else?
No, I don't, no. Nope, I don't have anything else.
All right, well, that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. Before we adjourn tonight, I would just like to identify the loss of a longtime town employee, a former town moderator for the longest time, Mr. Frank Gross. He passed away on Friday, I believe, if that's correct. If you would all please join me in a moment of silence for Mr. Gross. With that, Blithe, do you have anything else this evening?
Just to talk about the next meeting date, we had, before we, when we set our schedule, it's the first and third Tuesdays of the month. This year, as it happens every four years, there's a presidential primary. While the, while the town can legally, you can have, legally have a meeting on an election day, it's my understanding that we don't generally prefer not to meet on election night. So, my question to the board is, and I sent this out in an email earlier today, if we're going to change the date, we meet on a different night, we just need to pick it. So, I'm wondering if you, I have some information from select person Van Tyn, she said she is available on the 10th, I'm not suggesting that needs to be the date, I'm just telling you, that's what I heard from her. I haven't heard from her since I sent out that email. If, either of you have some thoughts on the date, given that this room isn't necessarily available, um, it's either this room or G seven, or a different night. It would be helpful to just plan, because we've got an awful lot to cover that night.
Budget deliberations will be part of that meeting, if memory serves, so I do imagine that there may be a good amount of interested residents who would like to come and join that discussion. As such, I would recommend against using G seven for that evening's meeting, as that would make it more difficult to execute from that perspective.
I agree.
I also anticipate a couple of executive sessions that we need to have for some pending litigation and, um, a couple other things, so, like I said, fairly robust calendar.
So, then that leaves us with pushing forward and having our meeting on the evening of the presidential primary on the third, or pushing to Monday, the ninth, is that correct?
I think the fifth was a date on the list as well. Aren't you good?
Thursday.
Thursday, the fifth is available? Monday, the ninth is available, if you want this room.
I'm available both. I'm not, I'm not advocating this, but you can't do it on a Saturday, or could we have a meeting on a Saturday? And I know you have, I don't have children, so I know you have young children, so.
There's enough seats for them, they're okay.
You can put them up here, sure. I don't know, is that something that we could, or can't you, is that not allowed because of, uh, town halls really considered closed?
Yeah, the building is closed, I mean, generally, I would say you would not have it on a weekend, not just because of the convenience of staff or whatever, it's simply a matter of, yeah, gen, generally, you don't. I don't know that there's state law you can't, but I don't think that there is, but.
Is there a reason why you would prefer a Saturday as opposed to
No, just if it's going to be a long meeting, it allows us, instead of going till twelve or one in the morning, you can start at ten o'clock and go through the day.
Or I'd suggest if we're, like we did the last time, if we're going to have any executive sessions, perhaps the board can meet at five-thirty or six, so we can get those done ahead and keep to the timeframe that people are expecting.
Yeah. I'm available pretty much whenever, so.
I would also point out, I think I mentioned this earlier, that the school, uh, Norfolk Schools is having their public hearing on the budget on Wednesday, March fourth, which I'm planning to attend, I'm, don't know if anyone else is, but the public might be interested in that.
As, as well, I think it would be a benefit for us to post the meeting for the board as well, in case
Yep, good point.
Two members would like to attend, just so we don't run into any issues. Uh, it would be my personal preference that since we have the ability to move the meeting, that we not have it on the third, just to not conflict people who may want to attend and may be voting late in the evening.
Mm-huh.
Um, I'm hesitant to do it Thursday, just because of how off-cycle that is, I think I'm leaning more towards doing it on Monday, the ninth.
Well, let me check with, um, Ms. Van Tyne to make sure she can make it. Uh, if, if she, if, if she can only make the fifth, is that okay?
Yep.
All right. We'll figure one of the two out.
Very good. And then we'll post a meeting for the
And are
Fourth as a precaution.
Absolutely. And are you, just so I can ask while I have you here, are you both available to start a little earlier, if that's poss, you know?
I can start as early as five-thirty.
Okay.
I can start early.
Okay.
Lot of meetings, huh?
It's great.
Blithe, anything else for us this evening?
No, thank you.
Judith, anything for the board? No? Chris, anything else?
Nothing else.
Anybody in the audience this evening? All right, with that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a great evening, thank you.